And 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by S.A.U. 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Let's get that back.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Board, Historic District Commission, and Heritage Commission together. Have I got all the folks that are here?
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission, yes.
It's on, yeah.
Didn't say so on my script here. All right, and welcome. I'm going to start by introducing the Planning Board, and they'll ask the other Commissions to please introduce, if your chairs are here, I should know them, but at any rate. So everyone will know everybody. Thank you. So I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Extra Planning Board, and to my left is...
It's one quick amendment to what Language is saying. If you're on more than one of these boards, if you're on multiples that are here, bring them all up when you introduce yourself, please. Aaron Brown, Planning Board.
John Gruder, Planning Board and Planning Board Rep to the Heritage Commission.
Nancy Valangere, Select Board Representative to the Planning Board and Select Board Representative to the Conservation Commission.
Pete.
Pete Cameron, Planning Board.
Is that all?
I beg your pardon?
That's all. Okay.
Disidentified here.
Okay. So let's go to the Conservation Commission next, please.
Don Clement, Conservation Commission.
Dave Short, Conservation Commission.
Andrew Coff, Conservation Commission. I'm the Chair.
Good.
Keith Whitehouse, Conservation Commission.
Trevor Matera, Conservation Commission.
And the Heritage Commission, please.
Mr. Chair, one more Conservation Commission person just walked in.
Calwell, Conservation Commission.
Sit up at the table, please, sir. We have seats down. Thank you.
Only one of us likes...
This is almost like an all-boards meeting. Carry on. Heritage.
John Merkle, Heritage Commission.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Louis, Heritage Commission.
Dame Gentlemen, Heritage and Historic District.
Okay.
Julie Gilman, Spanning the Globe here, Select Board Rep to the Heritage Commission and the HDC.
All right. And Historic District Commission, we've got some people here.
Grayson Shepherd, Historic District Commission.
And Kevin Kahn, Historic District Commission.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for joining us tonight. This is history we're making. Of course, we always make history in Exeter anyway. Is there a person presenting, so we know what we're discussing tonight?
Absolutely.
And why we all gathered together, just for you, sir?
Thank you very much. My name is Darren Winham. I'm the Economic Development Director of the Town of Exeter. Before we begin, I just want to thank you all for coming. I know it's close to Christmas. I know you folks give a lot of time, talent, to those boards, and I just really appreciate you guys coming in on such short notice for such an important thing. So thank you all for doing that. You guys had to be here anyway, but I appreciate you allowing all of us to be here as well. And I want to shout out, if you don't mind, to the staff, Kristen Murphy, Dave Sharples, Doug Eastman, Barb McAvoy, and Greg in the corner over here, because these were emails that went around on Sunday, just to let people know the situation in terms of the property. Nancy Phillips and Elliot Berkowitz, to my left, are very generously offering to donate 23 Water Street, which is right on the water, and on Water Street, an excellent parcel as what will become Pearpoint Park. The reason that we have to do it in this manner is that while we are an SB2 town, the voters of Exeter voted RSA 4114 Alpha in many years ago to allow the Select Board to buy and sell, acquire and distribute property. In order to do that, they have to receive a recommendation by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. Because of where this property is located, the RSA requires both the HDC and the Heritage Commission to weigh in as well. In order to make this happen, the Select Board has to hold two public hearings, the first of which will be tomorrow morning. So if it's possible, we'd very much like your recommendations this evening to pass along to them. The second public hearing has to be held within 10 days, but not more than 14 days. And so they will have their second public hearing on the 18th, which is 10 days later, and then meet that billet, and that is a regular scheduled beating. So, this parcel, again, it's 23 Water Street. There's 100 reasons that I think this is a good idea, but mostly would like to hear what you folks think about it. The idea is being a park. We are planning, Greg, myself, and others are planning to fundraise for this as well. The hope is, is that we do put some, we do look at it either as a CIP or with a budget or something in the future, but we have committed to fundraise. We also have some local entities that are willing to donate their time. We have a gentleman here, Keith Whitehouse, who owns Yeti Lawn Care, that is willing to donate his time, his talent, and his company and equipment and personnel to assist as well, which is obviously very generous, and we appreciate it. And so we will answer questions. I don't know if you folks have anything you want to add. The owners are here, they can answer questions, as can our Parks Director, Greg Bissin. So that's all I really have. I just want to sort of see what you folks think and can answer whatever you have.
Did you say they're donating this?
They would be donating this property to us, to the Town of Exeter, as a park.
As a, so that's one of the stipulations that'd be used as a park?
Yeah, it would be used as a park, yep. That's one of the stipulations. And, you know, I know that when I was talking to some of my colleagues who are Economic Development Directors as well in other towns, a lot of times, one would say, geez, as an Economic Development Director, wouldn't you rather see a building that pays taxes, that has employees? And I think there's a consensus among us that a parcel like this, right on this side of Water Street and on the water, the access to the water with the views, the benefits that would have to other existing businesses in town, and the access and proximity to public parking, makes this just something that we really can't pass up. I think it's extremely generous, and I really appreciate it from both Ms. Phillips and Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes. Go ahead, Don.
Don Clement, Conservation Commission. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Berkowitz for a very generous donation. I think it's a wonderful parcel along the river, protects the riverfront. Couple of questions, I know you're talking about, it's going to need some improvements in order to make it safely accessible for townsfolk, for people. And that's probably what the fundraising's all about.
Yes, 100%.
One of the things I know from having been on the parcel many times, when we did a, when there was a fish ladder there, we did fish ladder tours with the Exeter-Spaunsko River Local Advisory Committee, is that we have an old foundation that's going to probably have to be filled in.
Yep, absolutely.
I think we're going to have to go to the state, the town's going to have to go to the state to get fill permits and fill-in permits. So the town is ready to do that, if that's what it takes?
Well, I'd say I'm pretty excited about this, but Kristen Murphy is much more so. I think she tried to do a backflip. So she's on that one. I don't know the regs.
No, no, I'm very excited about this, too. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I think it's a great fit, it's a great, you know, it's a great location, gives people access to the river. We can figure out ways to do that, gives a little place to sit, you know, a greenery, view and all that. I just want to make sure that we all understand what has to take place going forward in order to make it a very usable and viable piece of park.
I think it would be a significant investment, and that's why we're committed to fundraising for that. It may be something that we make it safe.
Yeah.
And even not necessarily accessed in the short term, because we have to have it safe.
Yeah.
And then Greg, of course, can talk about what it would look like in the future.
Sure.
And we have several different visions for that, but, you know, we'll have that professionally done and then move forward in a methodic manner that we can afford.
Because it's right on the river, could I suggest that as you move forward with these visions, that you keep the Conservation Commission in the loop?
Of course.
Because, as well as being a great recreational area.
Right.
It has conservation requirements and consequences that need to be, you know, that should be followed.
I agree very much, very much.
Jen Martel joined us. She's one of the Planning Board members. Hi, Jen.
Hi, Lang. Thank you.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Langdon, we have a question.
Yes.
Francois, so it's a stipulation from the donor that it become a park?
Yes, ma'am.
And why is that? And is there a value on the property?
They are having it appraised at this time. There is a value. The state purposes, that's why they were doing it this year, and they want to see the park as a legacy property. And that's why they're donating it to the town, because they, you know, they feel it's a great, it's a great use of that piece of property, as opposed to other potential uses. I will say, and I'll let them say this too, but they have had offers for the property. I think anybody who has property on Water Street next year is going to be receiving offers, but I think that their motivation is for the future.
Yes, Julie.
Yes, when the waterfront commercial district was established on the National Register, there was a building there that was contributing, a contributing resource, meaning it was part of Exeter's history, and it made the downtown a complete feast. But since the building burned down, and it's now been a missing tooth for...
30 years.
Yeah. That really doesn't pertain anymore. It's not contributing to the district. I would ask that when it comes time to design the park, and my fellow Heritage Commission members and HDC members can weigh in, that there be some consideration for the street-facing edge to reflect its original purpose as a commercial building. It's a little designy, so we have to talk about that in depth, but that would be something to give back to the district, I guess.
That's true. I don't know this, but I'm assuming that anything that would be done there at any rate would have to go in from the HDC, would it not?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Something of that scale, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Possibly the Conservation people know this, but the fish ladder used to be there. So does New Hampshire River still own that property, or do we have to do anything for fish, or?
That's a, not that I know of. I thought that was taken care of when the dam was, oh, sorry, Don.
When the dam was removed, the fish ladder was removed, and so it has no bearing on the, that property has no bearing on the passage of fish. Actually, the passage of fish, since the dam has been taken out, has gone up significantly. It's, Trevor, what is it, like 60,000, 80,000 this year?
Over 100,000.
Over 100,000 L-Wipes passed through the, up into the upper parts of the river. So no, the efficient game, other than, you know, normal DES regulations for riverfront, you know, filling and stuff like that, oil lines applies.
And you do, everybody does know that Founders Park is right across...
Yes.
Practically, you could wait across. So there is another park right there. Would these two parks, I don't know how parks could join each other across the river?
There is no river access at Founders Park. And I don't know if there would be at this park either. Yeah, I don't know that there would either. I don't know the answer.
Well, you could if you would have designed on this park, some steps to the river. If you start outside, that was good. Anyone else?
I think that would make like the third park that has been either donated to the town or town-owned property that we've turned into a park in the downtown central area. So just a little fun fact.
What are the other two?
The Town House Common on the corner of Court Street and Founders Park, and Swayze Park.
Wasn't Stewart Park? Stewart Park's not, has that always been there?
No. I don't know how that was.
Or maybe it was just named. I don't remember tonight.
That's a park, yeah.
You're right.
Excuse me, following a little bit on what Don was saying earlier, the safety aspects here. What's the cycle, or what's the sequence in which that's going to be addressed?
We've got just a gentleman can answer that, right here. I don't know if I can answer it, but...
You can talk about the rest of the stuff.
He's good on sequencing things right now.
Pete, good question. First, that lovely fence will stay temporarily until we have a design picked, so people can't wander down. We have examined, we started actually looking at this parcel this past spring, knowing the deficiencies in safety. So fencing would be put up to make sure no one topples over that large concrete wall at the very end of the park, looking at some kind of steps, some kind of observation platform. I mean, it's a very raw, we just started talking about the safety aspect of it, but also being apparent that it is a site that will need to be very carefully laid out to make sure it's, especially as Don mentioned, the fill, right behind that wooden fence, there is a large gaping hole that drops, and you can actually kind of see underneath the sidewalk a little bit. So that will need to be filled in. So that's why keeping that fence up is going to be the most important part until we have a firm design in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Jen?
So is there, like, going to be a design committee, or who's choosing the design for this, and what elements are going to be there?
So as part of the donation, Nancy Phillips is asked to be a part of that team, and then we'll build that team from there. Obviously, Greg would be involved, Dave Sharples, of course, as the planner, but we don't have, we wouldn't have picked that. It will be, I think it'll probably be a Select Board decision of who might...
Yeah, I mean, I think just from perspectives of what I've heard today, I think it would make sense to have a member of the Conservation Commission, a member of the Historic District Commission, some more resident input involved in that committee. I think that'd be great.
And someone with experience, Jen?
I'd be happy to join that committee. It's a really fun project.
I might know, we might know someone.
All right, I think we're pretty well set. We have a suggested motion that I would, Davis provided for me, also for the Planning Board, suggested for HDC, and suggested for the Heritage Commission. These are the three Commissions, I guess, or Boards that need to respond to this. And Conservation Commission should also be, yes, you're right.
Thank you, Greg.
I slipped on that one.
It happens.
That would be most hopeful.
So how do you want to do this? Do you want to do, have each Board do their own thing?
I think we'll take, yeah, I think we'll take a Board at a time.
Sorry. I ran out of motion one.
Do you want to do each Board a different way? Or what are you going to do?
Dave, is it preference to have each of the Boards make their own motions?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay, that makes sense to me, yeah. So I'll take it, the Planning Board is at the top of the list, so would anybody on the Board feel motivated to make a motion, because the Chair is ready to hear it? John, you look like you're anxious.
So how do we do this, like, we're accepting the property?
The motion's set up, so you're either saying recommend or does not recommend. So it's set up, either one, just like our Planning Board members, and you choose which one to put in.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to send a memo to the Select Board indicating that the Planning Board recommends the acquisition of the Pearpoint Group LLC property at 23 Water Street, tax map parcel 72-39, for the purpose of creating a public park.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded? Well, let's do a hand vote on this.
Excuse me, just a minute.
Excuse me?
Are we going to say unanimously, or is it going to be reflected in a minute? Is there going to be minutes of this meeting? Yes.
Okay. So the vote then taken by each of the Groups?
Will be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you.
I think the Select Board has a couple reps in the room, too, so...
Yes.
They'll probably know what happened.
All right, so I'm going to ask for a hand vote. For those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Extinctions? Unanimous vote on the part of the Planning Board. How about the Historic District Commission? The floor is yours.
Grayson Shepherd for the Historic District Commission, move to send a memo to the Select Board indicating that the Historic District Commission recommends the acquisition of the Pearpoint Group LLC property at 23 Water Street, tax map parcel 7239, for the purposes of creating a public park.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four, carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Heritage Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the Heritage Commission, I move to send a memo to the Select Board indicating the Heritage Commission recommends the acquisition of the Pearpoint Group LLC property at 23 Water Street, tax map parcel 72-39, for the purposes of creating a public park. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Conservation Commission. Andrew has a copy of the, just use your Commission's title.
I will make a motion to send a memo to the Select Board indicating that the Conservation Commission recommends the acquisition of the Pearpoint Group LLC property at 23 Water Street, tax map parcel 7239, for the purposes of creating a public park.
Second.
Okay, we will vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Seven or six to zero there.
I can't vote, I don't vote. I'm not voting my own.
Thank you. I think that we express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for this gift for the town, and look very excitedly towards the future of a nice little park to take a catch of breath right in downtown.
Great.
Ross from the other park.
Thank you, Ellen White.
Really nice.
Thank you again for everyone for coming on such short notice, and I wish everybody happy holidays.
And just remember, the Select Board's meeting tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, if anybody wants to go to that for a public memo.
Coffee and donuts?
Only if you're bringing...
So we've conducted our business.
Thank you all very much for coming. Very much appreciated. And thank you to Elliot and Nancy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right.
I'd like to welcome you to the Exeter Planning Board meeting, excuse me, Thursday, December 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Norwijk Room of the Exeter Office Building, located at 10th Street, Front Street in Exeter. And begin the meeting by introducing members of the Board. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chair of the Board, and to my left is?
Aaron Brown.
John Gruder.
Nancy Belandres, Luck Board Representative.
And my right?
Oh, Pete Cameron, clerk.
Jen Martel.
All regular members. Thank you very much. We're going to start this evening's meeting with approving some minutes, the first of the 2nd of November. Game is our packet, so when is others wise in other parts of the country now, so that anybody have some suggestions or comments?
Pete? What should we do it?
The 2nd of November. Those are the ones we tabled last time because we wanted to facilitate meeting.
Yes, okay. Excuse me, let's see, it says 127.
127.
Oh, yeah. This was, here, this was the, my statement that we had asked to the motion. And I guess we had not had any explanation of the criteria for that motion, and I think the reason for that was they were abutting pieces of property, and therefore we didn't need to go through that, although this says we did. Is anybody else concerned at all about that?
Line 27?
127?
127, 128.
You're not making sense for line 27.
All right, yes, 127 is a blank.
No, but 20, I thought you said 27, which was to approve some other minutes, so, okay, 127.
128, actually.
128, all right.
And that's that our standard motion with respect to granting of waivers. And I do not recall that we talked about the criteria, the five criteria or six criteria that have to be met. And I think the reason we didn't do that was that these were abutting pieces of property, and therefore it was, there was no need to go through criteria by criteria. It's probably okay, but to state that we, that I reviewed the criteria is not quite accurate.
I'd have to go back and watch the meeting, Pete. It was a month ago.
I know. Well, isn't that the standard, standard motion?
We have to do?
It's a standard motion, but it says after reviewing the criteria.
Standard motion.
And there, no, we didn't discuss the criteria.
Maybe you didn't discuss it, but you should have reviewed it, because you knew, you knew it, you felt it met the criteria when you made the motion, right?
Yeah, it doesn't mention discuss.
The only, the only thing that I recall has to do with the fact that it was abutting pieces, and that was the reason that we didn't need to go through criteria by criteria.
Abutting piece is owned by the same person.
That's correct.
Yes.
So you did it on one, but you didn't need to do it on the other because it was duplicative?
Yeah.
So I would say you reviewed the criteria. It sounds like you did.
All right, as I say, I read that, and I'm not quite, I'll pass on it and leave it the way it is, because I don't think we're ever going to end up in court on this one. I just merely wanted to point that out, out to you.
Yeah.
That we didn't do our normal process.
Well, you, yeah, you don't have to say each criteria, that's the plan, you know, Planning Board's practice is that. But as long as you review it, you know, something submitted, and you've reviewed it, and you state that, then you're free, you don't have to discuss each one.
Yeah, but there wasn't any submitted. There was nothing submitted. The only thing that we talked about and was actually submitted then was the fact that it was abutting properties. Because there was no discussion of any of the, but that's okay. I really wanted to point it out, and I'm willing to have it stand the way it is.
Okay.
Because I don't think we're getting any, I only worry about whether we end up getting a litigation. And we're not going to on this one.
Okay.
So I withdraw, I leave on the, on the record tonight what that discussion was, but I'll withdraw, and as far as I'm concerned, the rest of the minutes are clean.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on 84. It says Mr. Blank, unidentified.
84?
Oh, yeah, I don't remember who that was.
No, and I started to try to look for that earlier today and didn't get back to it. So, and then 119, I'm just going to, it says GOV did the flagging. I'm just going to suggest we include GOV Environmental Services and not just GOV.
Right, right.
Okay. Anything else? Can I entertain a motion to approve as amended?
To approve the minutes of November 2nd, 2023.
As amended.
Moved and seconded, thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Those in favor, voice vote, please. Say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
I abstain.
Oh, you, one abstention. Thank you, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
Next, as said, is meeting in November 16th. Anyone have any comments about these minutes?
Well, after everybody else has, I have another concern.
I couldn't hear.
I don't hear any, so Pete?
I don't have any.
Well, I see he's shaking.
176.
Yes.
Now, I recall that I posed a specific question to Mr. Murray. And let me preface this. This has to do with some issues with respect to Riverwoods and access to Route 111. I specifically asked Mr. Murray why he had?
Mr. Who?
What?
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray.
No, 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 Murray owns the property.
Well, I don't think he was at the meeting, was he?
I had, yes, he was.
Yeah, he was there.
And I specifically asked him, why did he, at this point in time, enter into some form of agreement, which we never really got into, with respect to this piece of property? And he said, oh, because I want to have a view of the woods, not, this is lowercase, but not an uppercase, woods. I want somehow, I think I went back, and I found this in the trans, in the oral part of the hearing, and there's a reason which I will not go into right now, because it's not pertinent, but I would like to recommend that that question and answer be inserted into the minutes. This has, this relates to other issues with respect to Riverwoods, which I am involved. So I'm not sure what, what to do here, ladies and gentlemen.
Why don't we just wait, do them next two weeks when you have all your information?
I said, make a pardon?
I said, why don't we table these? If you want to change?
I, if we could table these, I will provide language at the next meeting that I believe is appropriate to be inserted at this point.
I will move to table the draft meeting minutes for November 16th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Voice vote. Those in favor, please say, in case by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it?
Chairman?
We look forward to having these come back.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I add that we could just have Daniel look at the, look at the, he heard it, he takes the minutes of this meeting, and he can make that adjustment to what, because what you're going to research, not insert something that, you're just going to insert what was set.
I was just going to say what the question was and what the answer was.
And what he answered, okay. Well, I'll reach out to Daniel to have him do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do you remember when that was, Pete, in the?
Oh, right around that.
We said right around that 176 line.
Yeah.
Well, what time it was during the meeting?
Well, it was a discussion of the lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah, Daniel will have to find it.
He'll know how to find it, yeah.
I think he can find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, continued public hearing on the application of Granite State Construction Services LLC for a lot line adjustment between properties at 12 Little River Road and 12A Little River Road, and a site plan review for proposed single-family open space development on the property located at 12 Little River Road, former Cavalry Baptist Church. The subject property is located at R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcels number 62-90 and 62-90-1. It's Planning Board Case 23-15. So Dave, could you start us, please?
Yeah, thank you. The applicant did appear, as you mentioned, before the Planning Board at the November 6th meeting, well, as mentioned in the minutes, we just discussed. For review, their application and plans revised as November 2023. At the meeting, the Board granted the lot line adjustment and approved the waiver from their requirement for a vegetated perimeter strip for the site plan, with the two conditions as noted in the draft meeting minutes. Given concerns regarding stormwater, the Board voted to continue discussion on the applicant's second waiver request from the stormwater management regulations until this, tonight's meeting, to allow the applicant to meet with me for further discussion, because I did, had a concern on that, because I was there at both TRC meetings, and I had a concern that they were asking for, basically at that time, you know, just a blanket waiver from the stormwater regulations. Subsequently, since then, they've revised the plans. Mr. Smith can elaborate more on that, and I've consulted with UEI and so forth, and I believe they came to the determination that they would meet the requirements based on what they have proposed, the stormwater management requirements, and really the only thing would be just creating this stormwater management report, and they felt it was unnecessary. So I, you know, my objection that I had before, I no longer have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Christian Smith of Beals Associates, Sam McCarker of Granite State Construction is with us in the audience tonight, and I'll quickly go over the details of, of that. And, you know, it's just unfortunate Dave hadn't seen those prior to the last hearing, but essentially, in addition to the stone drip edges that we have around all of the roof eaves, we have added bio-retention swales, or they call them dry swales, which essentially has the same filter media that bio-retention ponds do, and then just get loamed and seeded. And that takes care of basically almost all of the pavement. And again, you know, I'll remind the Board that we are reducing the overall impervious on the property by 34%. So we talked a little bit last time about the stone drip edges meeting all of the criteria with regard to pollutant removal and specifically nutrient removal, aside from 5% of the total nitrogen. And essentially, you know, your ordinance requires 60% removal. The stone drip edges have been shown in the AOT pollutant removal table to remove 55%. Dave suggested, and I actually did this, I went and did some research on nutrients provided or entered into the stormwater system from roofs. And roofs are not a substantial contributor to nutrients whatsoever. Essentially, where you get nitrogen and phosphorus from a roof is either from leaf drop or bird poop. So, you know, basically, you know, based on that, I would say that the nutrient removal criteria has been met as well, because the swales provide the same removal as, as does a bio-retention pond, which is basically the, you know, basis of the, of the ordinance with regard to that. pond, which is basically the, you know, basis of the ordinance with regard to that. The only other change we made was a very simple change to the forced main sewer, and that was to provide six feet of cover all the way down until we 45 up, almost right, well, about 20 feet back of the existing manhole. And I went through with Paul Velosage on how he wanted that connected in. We've designed it all that way, so UEI's comments have been addressed, and Paul was happy with that solution. I did read all of the criteria into the record at the last hearing for that waiver, so unless there's additional questions from the board, I will leave it up to you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now where were we? We did the... We approved the lot line adjustment. And we're talking about things. Do we... Were they open to the public or not? I think I did.
Last time?
Yeah.
I believe you did as well.
Openly closed the public, so we're at the board level, if you will.
Yeah, there was public comment last time.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, I forgot one thing.
Certainly.
Aaron, I also did on this sheet add the dimensions of the building boxes that are shown.
Oh, great.
So the four off to the sides of the road are 36 by 48, or 38 by 46, and then the larger one is 52 by 55.
Great.
And again, as long as he builds within those, you know, he's safe moving forward.
Thank you.
Good.
You might want to open it to the public again, though.
Sure, I can do that. If there's anybody in the public, let me open it to the public here at this time. And if anyone has any questions or comments? You may recall, we were at the library last time. We won't have any announcements at 8 o'clock, then we got to get out.
I'm gonna try that on you. Let's speed our meeting up if I do that.
Okay, seen none, then we'll come back to the board. Any other questions the board has?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering, so the proposed driveway, is that crowned or...?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess I'm concerned about the water that's like, you know, falling on the driveway that would be sort of sheet flowing. Like, I'm looking in the area of that turnaround. So there's quite a bit of water there, kind of sheet flowing off, but I don't see a bio-swale there.
No, that's because that's actually a high point. The driveway comes up, as you can see, at a very shallow slope all the way to here, and this also comes up at that half a percent. So all of that water comes down here, and we'll ultimately get in this swale or on that side.
Okay, so it's crowned, kind of at the bottom part, but except for that area.
Except for the fire truck turnaround, that's correct.
That was my question. Great.
Okay.
I have one question.
Aaron?
Christian, we discussed bedroom, bath, and square footage count as well. Did that... Was that in stone?
If I'm not mistaken, I think Sam intends to do all of these as threes.
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms, yeah.
Okay. And square footage was the dimensions of the boxes, basically?
The boxes, and like I had mentioned before, not knowing the exact setbacks, you know, there was a couple plans. One was garage unders, if we didn't get the buffer.
Right.
And those were going to be taller and under, and then others would be more, like I said, front-low garages, but yeah.
Okay.
There are Wendy Welton plans, this gentleman here that worked with almost a year that wants a home. They want a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, two-car garage, but if there's a four-bedroom design...
Excuse me, could you step to the microphone?
Sure.
Just so our friends at home and we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, so...
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Sam McCarter, Granite State Construction Services. So some of the plans may be a layout of a four-bedroom, in this particular case for Chris here, but that room is going to actually be a massive laundry room with storage, table, folding table hanging and everything else, so that it's upstairs.
Sure.
In order to get it, that's why they want the box there that's bigger, so I can accommodate that and then have the open space downstairs with an area for the children and also a study with the open floor plan. And I have some designs, Aaron, based on your request, that I just, again, from Wendy Welton, just to kind of give you a feel, and they're from 1,800 to, I think it was 2,400 or something on the largest one.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't certain why we wanted to have a lot of discussion about bedroom and bath size. It's not typically part of our process. And I just, when applicant gets into that stuff, I have concerns that you may get limited.
Yeah.
And, you know, Dave does stuff in the field, which he has authority to do, that the board has granted him. But, you know, he could be, if you came, if someone, if the market changes and someone wants a five-bedroom, and we're sitting here and discussing, you know, three-bedrooms, that's a statistically significant change. I can tell you from my perspective, I don't care if you have one-bedroom or six-bedrooms. As long as it fits in your box, you know, it's beyond my jurisdiction, in my opinion, to choose somebody else's house design.
Yeah.
It's really up to you, you know, and the customer.
And that's what I'm trying to do with the customers, with the community, just to kind of see what the need is. And I also, after that last meeting we had, I met with Doug Eastman, and he had mentioned that as long as we meet the setbacks, the criteria, the roof height, and the plans that I do have, they're in the 20s on the roof height, because they're not... There is a couple that are garage under, because the topography slopes down with the existing churches.
Sure.
And even that, I believe, is under 30 feet.
Yeah.
Because of the size of it, so...
Sure.
Yep.
Thanks. Anyone else? Well, I know, I can keep going for a little bit. Want to get rid of me?
No.
Oh.
Let's take a vote.
Let's do that. Let's talk about the tenants first.
I was really quiet in that other meeting.
You're gonna feel like Santos here.
So we also talked about maintenance of trees and a fence, and, you know, how you guys are going to figure that out going forward. That's something that actually I do get concerned about, you know, on the board, is that we go through approvals, and then sometimes it works out really well. It's every neighborhood kind of takes on its own flavor. I know in my neighborhood, we have town land that we put into town land. We decided not to do an association, because we didn't want to have those responsibilities and requirements, and neighbors take care of it, and it works out fantastic. So I think it's really just important, in my opinion, that you're just clear to the end users as to what the expectation is at some level there, you know? That's probably pretty important.
Yeah, and I'm sure Sam will have his legal counsel make sure that all of that is addressed in condo documents.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that's your choice to do, the way you're doing it. I just, to me, if that's going to be a big part of it, then it should just try to be maintained, right?
Of course, absolutely.
Because we see, we even find, it's a big town, and resources are stretched, and there's times when, you know, in the, a lot of the swales and stuff aren't really maintained necessarily by the town over time. Fortunately, in my neighborhood, we all do it ourselves. We keep it rolling like it you hope it would, right? But not every neighborhood does that.
Absolutely.
So, you know, in a situation like this, where it's smaller, it's tighter, it's probably going to be a little bit more important, you know, with the waiver that we're talking about too, right?
Absolutely agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can provide for Sam, as an attachment to the condo docs, a quick and dirty inspection and maintenance manual for the stormwater features.
Yeah.
Very simple.
That's going to be a suggested condition.
Yeah, it's important stuff, because if it doesn't, if it's not maintained, it doesn't function, right?
And the fortunate thing is, these swales do not require a lot of maintenance.
Yeah.
Because you're literally just blowing seed on top of the bio-retention.
Sure.
Yeah.
Until they get filled in for a flatter lawn. That's why we got to put them in the docks.
Yeah. I don't know what ended up getting resolved on the fence.
That was a condition of the approval that we already... The waiver that we already approved.
Cedar fence.
Okay, so that's good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, six-foot.
Six-foot.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, Jen graciously elevated the fence two feet over what Sam was proposing.
That's all?
It's supposed to be six feet, right?
Yeah, I think six-foot's are pretty common.
It's a four-foot chain link fence currently.
Yeah, okay, we talked about a cedar fence.
Six, but this is more of a problem.
No, we were just busting out.
Four feet just encourages kids to try to jump over it.
Oh, of course.
We all listen to Jen.
And me, and I, at my age, I could bust a head.
Okay, any other questions or comments, discussion? Then let's... What conditions? No, we're not there yet. We got to...
We got the waiver.
Deal with waiver first. Stormwater management for redevelopment standards?
So I wanted to bring that before we get...
Okay, you got something else first?
Well, I just wanted to hear Dave's feedback on that, the stormwater management for redevelopment waiver motion. You brought it up in the beginning of this hearing tonight. Can you just bring up your position on that again?
Well, I don't take a position on the waiver. We leave that, the criteria, to you. But what I do is if I, you know, I'm like, absolutely not, you know, like I'll say at the TRC. And with this one, I was not in favor of it all with the plans that were submitted and what was being provided. And I was like, I would not recommend the board grant this waiver, because it triggers certain requirements that I feel should be met, or should be, you know, at least some semblance of understanding that they will be met, like, you know, nitrogen and phosphorus removal and so forth. So they came back with the bio-retention, you know, areas. They came back with the drip edge and so forth. And a lot of what's... And so then I had, I talked with UEI about, okay, so is this just an exercise, you know, like, is creating a stormwater analysis just an exercise in, I don't know, futility is the right word, but, you know, like, is this an exercise? Because of the amount of impervious surface area, you know, that we're talking about, is what they're proposing likely to meet the regs? And then I asked Mr. Smith then. I said, you know, is it your professional opinion that if you did this analysis, you would meet all the regulations? And I believe you said, you said yes to it.
I did.
And then we talked to UEI, and they also concurred. So I was like, okay, you know, it's all, most of it's coming off the roofs, it's going into drip edge, you don't really generate nitrogen from drip edges, and they have the bio-retention pond, so I was comfortable with not objecting to the waiver any longer, because I was satisfied with, you know, with that. But I'll leave you deciding whether it meets the criteria or not. That's up to the board.
Right. Thank you.
And Christian reviewed the criteria at our last meeting, and we ended up tabling it.
Yep.
So do you want to hear the criteria again, or are we comfortable we've heard the criteria?
We've heard him once.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. My biggest concern was Dave was tied up in another meeting and couldn't confirm that he saw the changed plans and what his thoughts are.
So I have...
Go ahead.
At the last meeting, Mr. Brown asked, have, and I'm just curious, Dave, if you know this answer, have we ever waived the stormwater report requirement? And if, I guess to the board, if it's not, like, are we concerned that doing this is going to trigger, like, future, like a lot of other applicants asking for this waiver?
I'm not sure. I don't know. I can't remember. I mean, these are fairly new. We revised them in 2018, so they've only been in existence for, you know, for four years or so, a little over four years, so I don't remember any, but that doesn't mean there wasn't one, you know, one somewhere.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Jen, the other thing is, I seriously would find it very hard to believe somebody could look at this as setting a precedent, because I don't know any other property for redevelopment with such a vast reduction, number one, in overall impervious area, and then, number two, you know, we're providing adequate stormwater treatment that does meet the regulation, you know, it's just preventing the time and effort of sending a soil scientist out here to soil map the thing, you know, have me go through the iteration of running full-on drainage calculations when I already know the answer. And your town engineer concurs with that. But I can't see anybody trying to say that this is a precedent setter, because most redevelopment, you're not finding a massive reduction in impervious, you're finding an increase. And in that case, we wouldn't have even contemplated it.
And I think that's...
Be careful, that's a very strong statement.
It is, but I...
We've had a lot of attorneys standing where you are that will put out some pretty crazy arguments, just putting that out there.
Understood.
I agree with you that the fact pattern is very favorable to granting the waiver and is unique.
And the water is being treated.
Yes.
Yeah.
But Dave, you couldn't remember any. Yeah, I couldn't either.
No.
So it's not a typical waiver. It's not like, you know, not counting trees.
It's not requested very often either.
Yeah.
And I normally would strongly object, like I did with this one in the beginning.
Right.
And just one follow-up question. So, I mean, we know, so the roofs and the, like, the impervious is being captured. There's going to be lawns, right? Lawns have fertilizer. People put all kinds of junk on their lawns. I mean, that runs off. Lawns are not 100% impervious. I mean, are not pervious necessarily. So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that, like, I feel like would just be, you know, I just don't want to be like so quick to say like, oh, it's all being treated, because it may not...
And I guess I'd just add to that, that the regulations don't talk about treatment of vegetated areas, regardless of it's lawn or not.
It doesn't do any...
No, it's all you're treating is the impervious area.
We do have some, we, I forget when we adopted those, but it was when I was here, some fertilizer ordinance. So we have some requirements of setbacks from wetlands, that you cannot use fertilizers, certain fertilizers, that they have to be organic and so forth, so as long as those, that ordinance is followed, it should minimize that issue.
Yeah. So then a condition should really be about, which I think it would be anyway, but maintaining the treatment systems that are being put in place. That becomes a little bit more critical, I think, if they're potentially getting a waiver.
Yeah, since a stormwater management plan wasn't done.
Right.
One of the things that we always require when they are done is an inspection and maintenance log.
Right.
So this wasn't done for, but I wrote a condition that a stormwater maintenance and inspection log shall be submitted with the final plans to the town plan for review and approval. This log shall be referenced in the HOA docs, completed and submitted to the town engineer annually, honor before January 31st. This shall be an ongoing condition of approval, as we do with all our other sites that do these plans. So they're still going to be...
Held to that.
Held to that.
Yeah.
Maintenance standard and annual reporting requirement.
Okay.
Mr. Shopples, did you just list all of your proposed conditions?
No, is the waiver on?
No, we're on a waiver right now.
Not a waiver.
Okay.
I can make a motion if you want.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion, please.
All right, I'll make a motion regarding stormwater management for redevelopment standards waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Granite State Conservation Services LLC, planning board case number 23-15, for a waiver from section 9.3.2 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations regarding stormwater management requirements for redevelopment be approved with the conditions as discussed.
Mr. Brown, I think you said Granite State Conservation Services? It's Granite State Construction Services.
Thank you. Granite State Construction Services. My mind saw something else.
Okay, so I will...
No, you're not doing conservation? No. Just rename your LLC.
Nancy, you making a second?
I'm trying, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. I think we've had our discussion, so hand vote, please. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
So that condition was attached to that waiver. Got it?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to add, I guess, thank you.
Do you have a...
Yes, I no longer need that one for this plan, because we already have it, so all the other conditions, one, they're all...
All the other conditions, one, they're all, yeah, they're all the standard conditions, but I will read them. Number one, a DWG file of the subdivision plan shall be provided, the site plan shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines of monumentation prior to signing the final plans. This plan must be an NAD 1983 State Plain New Hampshire FIPS 28 under feet ordinance. Two, all monumentations shall be set prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. The SWIP, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed by DPW and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Four, all comments in the Underwood engineers' review letters and the TRC comment letters and any subsequent comments as a result of further review shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plans. Five, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a building permit or certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable. Six, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. Seven, all condominium documents, including the declaration and bylaws, shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. In the event the town planner deems that review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Eight, the limit and cut and disturbance shall be flagged in the field prior to any site work and these flags shall be maintained until certificate of occupancy is issued. Nine, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submittal must be accepted by the DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. And 10, assurances for completion of all the proposed common improvements shall be provided in accordance with Section 12 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to any site work.
Mr. Chairman, quick point and one question. The PTAP has already been filed, Dave.
So you already met that condition?
Yeah, that condition's met because I think we, that was a request of, I believe, the first round of Underwood's comments. And they were good with that, so obviously I'll just bring copies to the, to the pre-construction.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
And then the second is just a question. And does the town actually bond private road construction?
We bond.
Or is it just the rent?
Common improvements, yeah, for condominiums. Because this is a condominium that's part of ownership. So what can happen, it's not a rental situation. If it's condominium situation and you start, you know, building the road and you sell one of the condos and then go solve it and go and walk away, then there's an innocent owner that doesn't have a guarantee to finish the common improvement. So we only bond the common improvements to make sure those are done.
Got it.
There are other ways that we can do that is if you don't want to transfer the property until all the common improvements are done, then we can talk, but.
Okay. Thank you. Just a point of clarification from me.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I moved at the request of Granite State Construction Services LLC, Planning Board Case Number 23-15, for a site plan approval for the proposed small-scale open space development be approved with the conditions as stated by our town planner.
Second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please hand vote with your right hand. In favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Yes.
It's good to see you in person. You're a little scary on Zoom. You were.
That was awful.
That was crazy. I was cracking up at that.
Okay. Christian from hell.
Oh, that was brutal.
Okay.
Take care.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from the next one. Is it okay to do it now, or do you want to?
You can do it now.
Okay, then I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
No, I'm just going to sit in the hall because you're not supposed to sit at the table.
Really?
Yes. Can't be part of the deliberations or.
See you next year.
I'm not going anywhere because there's more discussion up.
Okay, the application of Mary A. Point for multi-family site plan review for the proposed construction of an additional retail and residential unit within the existing structure located at 85-87 Water Street. Subject property is located in the WC waterfront commercial zoning district. Tax map parcel number 72-29 and it's planning based, Planning Board Case Number 23-18. And I don't think we opened this one yet, Dave, so is it ready to be heard?
Yes.
Okay, then I ask for motion to open this case. Please start the clock.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
In favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. And Dave, could you start us off, please?
Yes, as you stated, the applicant is seeking site plan approval for the proposed renovation of the existing structure to accommodate two retail units and eight residential units. I believe a few of them are existing. I think there's three there now.
Nine total. Three are existing.
Three existing, so adding six.
Six.
Oh, okay. We had eight in the, okay.
Total of six, okay.
So nine.
What about?
Total of nine. Two residential units, nine residential units.
Oh, okay.
The applicant has submitted, and there's three existing, so they're adding six units.
Got it.
Although, well, excuse me, we'll ask that later. Yeah, the applicant has submitted minor site plan review application plans and supporting documents dated October 10th, which were provided in the board meeting packet for the October 26th meeting. However, it was determined that the proposal is presented for the addition to the existing building would require variance from the ZBA for relief from the minimum rate of setbacks and a wetlands conditional use permit. The applicant's representatives have been advised, we advise them to review, but they, we said, you have an option to move ahead with the existing bill. They're like, what if we don't expand it all? So they came back and now they're all within the existing footprint. So all those issues that we had went away and before you tonight, the applicant, the applicant appeared before the zoning board at their October 17th meeting. They had to seek relief from the minimum requirement, parking requirements, and the variance application was granted. And I did provide a copy of the decision letter, I think in the previous meeting packet. The applicant is also requesting a waiver from Section 9.13.1 of the board's regulations which require parking to be provided in conformance with the off-street parking schedule as set forth in Article 5.6.6 of the zoning ordinance. And I have, I put in front of you, I put, everyone have this document that I put in front? It's a single document that I added before your meeting? Yeah, you got it. For that, he has to provide it in writing. He did provide us with that. I think I got it today and I provided you a copy. He'll go over the waiver criteria. The waiver is needed because although we got a variance from parking under the zoning ordinance, our site plan regulations also have a provision that they meet, that they need to meet the parking in the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance has no authority over the planning board to grant waivers from your regulations. Only you can do that. It's the same with Ioka and the church. You know, both, both those came before you. The Ioka came before you. Didn't really do anything outside, didn't change much of anything but interior, but added multifamily. So they need a waiver from the parking. The, you know, there's not much to review here as far, well, I don't think really much outside the parking. They did, they're doing some pretty extensive renovations to the facade. And that is all basically restoring it back to its more original construction because there's some shingles, like some cedar shakes that were filled into roofs, made like a little manseur covering up the old historic features that were underneath. And they're redoing, you know, they're removing a lot of those and restoring it, and it got HGC approval. And I am prepared with suggested, suggested conditions of approval if the board decides to act on the application this evening. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, Leonard. This is how it's once walked.
Right.
We want to bring it back to the.
It was Haley's TV, wasn't it, that time down there? Yeah. My neighbor at one time.
Who did that?
This has, they covered this oval with the shingles.
That's there. It's all covered over.
Yeah.
They shortened the windows. They covered the windows up and they took these down completely.
Really?
Oh, okay.
That's a story there.
It's going to look great.
I'll be broke.
Restoration.
Holy God.
That's good.
Yeah, much better.
It does.
We get a few more of them to do that.
You gonna keep this?
No, I want to take a picture of it.
You gotta watch this guy.
I take it, but give it to.
I ran this over to my studio then. Oh, boy.
I like that restoration. Thank you.
You worked with the historical district to get some of those?
Yeah, it's been approved.
Great. Okay, any questions, comments?
So aside from the parking waiver, what exactly are we approving? There's no site work.
That's about.
Yeah, well, our regulations trigger site plan approval for multifamily structures. And this is a multifamily. It's just kind of like the Ioka, the same thing. It went to the HGC, it got approved for the facade. But then our, it does trigger site plan because you're adding an additional six units and it triggers site plan. But the only thing really there is to review is you, is a parking waiver.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to talk about changing that in the future. But I think it's a good idea, like, you know, if you keep adding units, I mean, I think the planning board or somebody should be involved in having a discussion about the parking and where these folks are going to park.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a hard one. It's a hard one to me, that issue, the parking part. Because it is a downtown. So, you know, to allow growth, you either have to add additional parking, I think, frankly, as a community, not necessarily a developer or individual landowner, or, you know, not make that a big requirement of redevelopment. My opinion. So I, you know, that's one of the waivers that I personally struggle with having to grant. Meaning, I don't think you should need a waiver. I don't think it should be a requirement.
Yeah, really, because it's.
Not in the downtown.
Yeah.
Where there isn't.
Yeah, there's no parking.
There's no place to put a parking.
It comes with the territory. Yeah, where are you going to put it? Underneath your buildings? You got to redesign?
We tried.
It'd be the worst. But it just, it's not practical for quite a bit of the property in downtown Exeter.
There are several properties, though, that could provide.
Yeah.
So if you say no, then. Take it out. I'd ask you to stop talking about it, but.
I just, to me, and we're not going to do it tonight anyway, but to me, it's just one of those things that, in my opinion, it shouldn't be a requirement of an applicant. And I do, I don't think that means you don't, you can't discuss it. I think you can still certainly discuss it when they come up, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a requirement. You know, we can monitor the impact of redevelopment on the constraints of parking as the community ebbs and flows and.
Well, we've done that with the MUND.
Yeah.
The MUND is, is, it does, it does reduce the parking from probably, well, I don't know what this would require. Six would, two bedrooms?
One bedroom.
One bedroom, six one bedrooms. It would probably be like, and plus guest space, probably require eight spaces, this one.
Sure.
But the MUND would require one, you know, just one space per unit instead of, again, the guest spaces. But then the planning board has the flexibility under the MUND to go down to zero.
Right.
At kind of almost a discretion. So it's kind of in there. It's not a requirement. They don't have to go to the zoning board to get a variance. You know, if they run the MUND, it's like that, so. But he chose, you know, he's going through the ZBA because the MUND does require one of the units, at least 10% of the units need to be affordable.
Right.
Okay, let me open this to the public. Guess there's anybody in the public here that would like to speak? Give us our opinion or questions they may have. And if so, please step to the microphone.
Over there.
Yeah, I'm talking to it. Harvey's right there.
Talk about that rabbit again?
So, yes, so I'll introduce yourselves. So our viewers at home who know who's speaking. Hearing none, I'll close the public question and bring it back to the board. Are there any other questions about this or comments? If so, if not, I'm.
Well, there are concerns.
Concerns, yes.
The cumulative effect here of what has been occurring as we continue to approve redevelopment has been of concern to me for some period of time. Let's go back and ask some questions that we reviewed when we looked at the, at the church.
Okay.
Now, these spaces that will, are going to be, I won't call them assigned, but they're, what are the, where are these cars going to go when it snows? And the parking ban is installed. I guess I'm not sure where they go.
Yeah.
Now, we did have some discussion in connection with the church that yes, some of those cars would go to the railroad station parking lot.
No, I think.
Well, let's, let's go back.
No, Center Street.
Station, no.
Center Street.
Yeah.
Well, where?
The Center Street lot. It was right next to it.
Well, now, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I thought there was some discussion about the fact that when it snowed, that these cars needed to be moved. The one in connection with the church.
Correct. The church, the church, most likely, these people, they're going to park as close as they can.
Right.
That's where they're going to park. And probably it's going to be either on Court Street or Elliott. Or on the Center Street lot. One of those three places, I would imagine, the, the, you know, whoever lives there, the residents in that building will both park. Someone asked about where's the winter street, what are they going to do in the parking van? Because they're not going to be able to park on Elliott. They're not going to be, park on Court. The only, the closest place is the Center Street lot. And we looked at that and there's, I think, 10 parking van spots. 25? No, it's 23 total spot, parking spots. But I think the select board, or someone was contemplating increasing the number of, I think, is the whole lot? The whole lot. Okay, the whole lot is open to park, so there's 23 spots there. So I think it's our job, I think it kind of is related to what Aaron said earlier. It's our job to figure that out because we have overnight winter parking spots in this lot right here. I think there's 18 of them along the backside. There's, like, those 11 right here in this back lot, up against the fence to the new, the new nine condo right there. Those are all open where you can park for winter parking van. And anecdotally, they're not full. I mean, I've, I've come in in the morning, you know, when it snows and stuff like that. I don't see, you know, I don't know what the utilization rates, but there is some. But then we can adjust as more cars are needed to park winter parking van. We can open up more spots in our various parking lots for the winter parking van. And there's also some winter parking van spots down on the boat launch lot that you can park down there.
They can also pack along the back roadway.
Well, that's private property. I guess they.
But they can.
Yeah, they, if the owner, if the property owner lets them, then, or doesn't say anything, they might do that. But I was just talking public.
Yeah.
Okay, and let's go back. I can't recall the number of spaces that we approved of the church.
There were two parking spots on site.
That we, yes, two, and then another six or eight or many more on the street, if I recall.
Yeah, there's 11 units in that. I forget the configuration, but there was probably 20, 22 parking spots required and they provided two.
Yes.
Ballpark, so.
All right, so then Ioka.
Yeah, there's eight.
There is there.
Yeah.
And we approved those eight.
Yeah.
So that's coming to 28. By my.
Yeah.
And we'll have another, what, six here?
Well, these are units. Yeah, 11. If you're going by units, it's 11, 19, 25.
All right.
25 additional units, including these. Twenty-five additional units, including these.
Additional units that we've approved basically within the past two years.
Correct.
Uh, that concerns me. Because I'm not sure and that at some point in time, I have a distinct feeling that we need to, to put a stop. Maybe stop is not quite the right word, but we need to focus on the fact that we're designating parking spots for those who are residents here that otherwise folks might use coming into town for whatever other reason.
Absolutely agree.
Okay.
But, well, I don't, when you said stop at some point, that's a long way off. We have plenty of capacity downtown to park, plenty.
Well, other than, other than sometimes you can't find any, we have plenty of capacity.
No, we have to man, if we manage parking properly, we have plenty of parking. And we can provoke.
There was a big if though, if we manage properly.
And I, we, we are doing a, we're doing a downtown parking traffic and pedestrian flow analysis right now with StanTech. They've done all the utilization rates in downtown, they're doing parking demand modeling as we speak. There's a forum coming up Wednesday, the second public forum over at the town hall to talk about just that. And they're gonna make some recommendations, I'm already privy to probably some of them that they're gonna come out, you know, that we've been discussing, and we are gonna propose it. I say if because I can't make that decision, I don't do the implementation, neither does StanTech. That's gonna be up to the select board to implement those recommendations. But I believe you can, and they probably will, manage parking downtown better to accommodate everything you're talking about. And address those issues, because the bottom line is they, their, their research has shown there's about sixteen hundred, fifteen, somewhere fifteen hundred and something parking spots, private and public downtown. At a peak time, when, when they've, they've gone out and done counts, the peak time, when, when, when this lot's completely full and when Water Street's completely full, the, all the, all the spots is about a fifty-three percent utilization rate of all the parking spots that are available. So almost half of the parking spots are empty at peak time. What you're seeing is you're seeing this parking lot full, you're seeing Water Street full. Because right now, we don't manage parking at all. We don't, we don't enforce time parking, it's a two-hour parking, and I will guarantee, I sit, I'm out my window every day, that people park in front, in, in front of your place, uh, right there, and they sit there mostly all day and they never turn over. So that's why these two parking spa, places are always full and it's hard to find a parking spot. What we're gonna do is propose recommendations and hopefully they'll be taken to manage parking downtown by moving the people that are gonna stay there all day out into other places to park, all that other spots to park, and relieve this lot and Water Street lot for customers to come down and patronize businesses and get turnover. So, the goal is to have that turnover. That hopefully addresses some of your concerns, because we feel that as long as it's managed properly, there's ample parking in the downtown right now.
I've said my piece.
Right.
And, and you would think twice before moving downtown because of that, and a lot of people will. People are gonna have to make that decision, where I'd love to live here, but maybe I won't.
Let's say, well, a lot of the condos where the parking's on the first floor, you gotta go upstairs to do anything.
Yeah.
And the second floor to go to bed.
But that's absolutely typical of any downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Find a space in Boston.
No, there's not any parking here, cuz I can't park in the store I wanna go into.
That's right, exactly.
There's stages that parking goes through. Right now, everything's free, you can park for as long as you want, there's no timing, you know? And then, like, if you go to Boston, that's well-developed, like, private, you, you can go on SpotHero and you look and private people that are leaving for the weekend, they'll put their, their driveway on SpotHero, so they rent that spot for the weekend and people will take it cuz of the demand. I mean, Exeter's not on SpotHero, we're not anywhere close to, you know, like, not even, like, there's all these private lots you see, look at Citizens, you know, Citizens are like, and the swamps got blocked, their, their garage is like half-full all the time. Uh, there's plenty of private spots that just don't have, and then if you really had that demand, those people would start be renting out those spots to these residents. Like, the people that are living here will be like, hey, I need a place to park, and then someone's gonna be like, hey, I got a half-empty parking lot here. I'm gonna charge forty dollars a month or fifty or a hundred or whatever. So we're not even close to that stage in the continuum. Uh, I think we have adequate parking downtown, it just needs to be managed properly.
Okay.
Which it hasn't been in years.
No. No, we, when you just let people park all day in front of businesses, I mean, it's.
It's been years.
Yeah, I'm surprised more businesses aren't screaming at us.
It's been prior to COVID that uh, they're not policing down, downtown anymore and, and the realtors take advantage of that. They park there all day long, the same people, the same cars. I never parked, my employees never parked, my daughter never parks in front of the store.
Realtors.
We can blame for a lot of things. We can blame for the downtown parking issue in Exeter.
Get out there and sell some property.
I guess so.
Parking and staying.
Well, I'm gonna start requiring parking for these developments.
All right. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion if I want. I move at the request of Mario Ponti, Planning Board Case Number Twenty-three dash eighteen for minor site plan approval be approved.
I think, I think we need to do the waiver first, right?
Yep, we do.
I'm just practicing.
Okay. That's what I figured.
You're gonna do the parking space, right?
You can do the parking one.
I can do it.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that park, oh, how many spaces are required? Eight?
Uh, hold on. That was new that the six, yeah, let me.
Oh, number to require, okay.
All right, well, I gotta pull up the off-street parking schedule real quick. Cuz we added a unit. Well, not add a unit, but there was an extra unit, required parking space.
Everybody had a chance to read the letter, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Thoroughly.
Yeah, for six units, just say for parking required for six units.
Without that, we're eliminating it so it doesn't make a difference really.
Um, after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Mario Ponti, all right? Planning Board Case Number Twenty-three dash eighteen for a waiver from Section nine point thirteen point one to permit less off-street parking than the, than required for nine units, or for six units in accordance with Section five point six point six of the zoning ordinance be approved, period.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
It's nine units though, right?
Totally.
Yeah, but six are already, three are already in there.
Right, but.
That, with, the old, they don't need a waiver from that, their grandfather.
Okay.
That's good. All they need a waiver from is the six additional units they're adding.
And those are one-bedroom units.
Correct.
Which would mean one car.
Not by those ordinance, no.
Or no cars or three cars?
Do I have a second?
You don't know.
Yes, I seconded.
Oh, you did, thank you. Uh, hand vote please, those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposition, opposed? One, two, three, four, five, one, one opposition, motion carries. All right. Now, John.
Yeah, all right. I move at the request of Mario Ponti, Planning Board Case Twenty-three dash eighteen for minor site plan approval be approved.
I'll second.
Other conditions?
I would suggest that just the standard condition that all light or outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded. So no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. The plan doesn't show any that would violate that, but it's a standard condition, we put on everything.
Turn to amend here.
So do you agree with that addition?
To approve with, I guess approve with Dave's condition.
There you go.
Lighting condition.
You're very technical tonight.
And I will second the amendment.
Okay, moved and seconded. Again, hand vote, those in favor, please, raising your right hand. Okay, oppositions?
Abstained.
And one abstention, okay? Motion carries.
Congratulations. Be lucky with your project. Be nice to the realtors. You never know when you're talking to one.
It sounds realtor.
Uh, you know, all of these jewelry, you guys talk about.
We get to blame on a lot of stuff, I'll tell you.
So that meeting, that meeting that Dave was talking about, the second public hearing starts at six-thirty Wednesday night, six-thirty to seven-thirty, they're going to do a presentation, and then from seven-thirty, I think, to eight-thirty, it's open house. So, all are welcome.
Okay, you're back again?
I'm back, thank you.
I've reseated you, okay? Uh, any master plan to convers, conversation?
Yeah, we had a meeting this morning and I think we had one member in attendance, and he said it was a very heated meeting. And I'm not sure, does he wanna report on that?
He's still heated too.
I don't know which, I don't know, I don't know which to report on.
Uh, any land use regulations review?
Uh, not this evening, but I just wanna say we, we don't have a meeting for, I mean, any agenda items for the twenty-eighth. I know it's Christmas week, but it's zoning amendment time and we need to probably spend the next couple meetings doing that. Uh, we got busy, we started it, then we got kinda busy with applications and it's kind of a lot to, you know, after a couple hours of, of, you know, applications to pile on some, some zoning, some dense zoning provisions. But I'd like to have probably Nate Kelly here, I'd like to have the meeting, go ahead and, and present, uh, you know, the proposals that we've been working through so far. I was gonna go over it with the MPOC this morning, but one member didn't show up, so. One member canceled at the last moment. Uh, you gave it a P, so.
I didn't say kill the meeting, actually.
Well, we'll meet with them as well, you know, to formulate a plan, but we wanna go ahead with the twenty-eighth. We hope to see as many people that can be there as possible.
Well, so it'll be a work, a work meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's a regular scheduled meeting, but it'll just be a workshop session and, and, you know, we'd like to get into the weeds a little bit.
Presumably we'll have something to look in, look at in advance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So that will be.
Yeah, nothing you haven't seen, you've seen it all last year, it's not much has changed, there's been some minor changes, but the zoning amendments that we considered last year that we decided to hold off a little bit and kinda, so, so it's nothing you haven't seen. Uh, you had that last year, but we'll, we'll, we'll refresh everyone.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, it will.
Good, good.
Comment.
Okay, comment?
Yeah, I, Dave, I think it would be helpful, um, I found the discussion that uh, Chi, uh, Mr. Cameron brought up regarding downtown parking to be pretty interesting actually. Uh, and we've had meetings about that in the past, um, kinda going back prior to COVID when downtown parking didn't really matter for a couple of years there. And I, I think that the public in general probably has some interest in that, so I don't know if that's something you can bring to that meeting, the next meeting as well. You know, maybe just an update about where that's at.
Yeah, I mean, I'd encourage everybody, I mean, we had a public forum in an open house at the town hall, I relayed that to the planning board, and we push it out to everyone, we had a, you know, a decent turnout, we probably had thirty or so people come. It's next Wednesday.
Yeah.
The, the StanTech's gonna be there, I mean, I can provide an update as well at the next meeting, but I'd encourage you to really, you know, that, that's the whole focus of next Wednesday's meeting is, is about that, and it's got some pretty, I think, I think it's very interesting, I think if you're interested in it at all, you should definitely come Wednesday.
It is interesting.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to do it justice on the twenty-eighth like next Wednesday will be. I can do a condensed version or something like that, uh, but that's really.
Is it gonna be recorded or tele? Yeah, the last one was too.
Yeah, the last one was too, so you can just go online and watch the last one and you can watch this one on, you know, on demand on our website.
What time is it?
Six-thirty.
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 Well, is it gonna, are they gonna have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, they're gonna do a presentation, and then they, they got a lot of information, a lot of good data. I would suggest, you know, anybody who has any concerns about downtown parking or what's going on or should, should come to this meeting because it, they're doing all the data, they've done all the data, they got, they get the utilization rates, they've seen what, you know, what's happening downtown, and they're gonna start formulating some recommendations of how to manage it properly so we can get turnover for the businesses, you won't have trouble finding parking lot, you know, parking spot, you know, to patronize one of the businesses downtown, and employees and residents will, you know, they're not gonna be parking in front of the businesses anymore, but they'll be parking, you know, in the immediate area cuz there's a lot of on-street parking available within a three-minute walk of the van stand. It's just a lot of, all, everyone just goes to this one and Watch Street.
Right. Can I add something about the first presentation that was really an eye-opener? We don't speculate when we say cars are parking and not moving. We, uh, Exeter TV utilized our webcam and then did this fast track, I don't know what the right technical term is, but they did a speedup of it, and you could see cars that don't move for hours. So, you know, that, it's, it's getting that flow in there. I, I agree with Dave, we have ample parking and we're working on the winter parking ban parking. Been on it since we started approving. We want people who are gonna live in our community to have a place to park, so, for the winter parking ban, so.
Yeah.
It's all in the works to look at it, cuz I share the same concern.
Yeah, and one, that was being, they played that loop.
Yes.
Uh, at the open house.
Yes.
And it was just the camera, it's set up in town hall and it just looks down and there's like a, you know, you take the, like, it's a ten-stall, uh, strip, you know, by the Capital Tide, you know, building, uh, right there, and you see like seven or eight of the spots all day. So, you know, the sun comes up and, you know, and then people, boom, 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 pulling around ten o'clock, that's when the business is open. And then you just see those cars, they never move, but you do see two or three spots that stay open. And someone comes in and then leaves, soon as that person leaves, someone else comes in. And then that person leaves and, and then someone else comes right in. So there's a ton of turnover just on those few spots that are open, and they're so quick, it suggests that we're not managing this problem.
We don't have a parking enforcement mechanism right now.
To someone to go right in, well, if someone didn't pull out at that point, that, where would that person go?
Right.
They'd either not stop or they'd loop around trying to find parking, so.
And that's only one section of downtown, the cameras was only in that area. We don't, we don't have the visual of the other end of town.
That's probably the worst, though.
Probably, well, who knows, but I'm just saying, so, and right now, we don't, we no longer have that position for an enforcement officer.
Right.
It was filled and then there was a Supreme Court decision about, you know.
Marking tires.
Marking tires and it being personal property and.
So Dover still marks tires.
Well, that's their prerogative, we just, we don't have the person to even mark others, so.
I understand.
That's what we're also looking at, so.
Okay, field modifications?
Nope, none requested.
Okay. How we're doing with credits, letters of credit?
Uh, we haven't given away anything since last meeting.
Haven't seen my check in the mail yet.
Haven't, yeah, no, haven't given anything back since the last meeting.
Okay.
We're working on a couple though.
All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn, so.
Second?
Second.
Moving to seconded, those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Merry Christmas. Oh, no.
Thank you for shooting into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels Six and Twenty-two. Channel Six is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel Twenty-two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA sixteen and can be found on Channel Eight with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter.